Gentlemen.
You don't want to continue your conversation? Just let us know when you're ready.
We both up here at the same time?
Sure, why not?
Yeah, thanks, thanks.
We know who he is, we don't know who you are.
I'm John Greenwood from Piasta, just outside of Dubuque. For those of you who are not familiar with the town. My wife and I are, develop real estate. She owns a real estate company in Dubuque. And we do some real estate development through that company. So what we're looking at here in Benton is the USDA has put out a solicitation to upgrade. They want a new building here in town. You already have one here. They're looking to upgrade that building, build it to have one, I think, larger building. They don't give us the details, they just say they're looking for a new building. So our job is to go out and try to locate a suitable site to put such a building. It would be roughly an eight to 10,000 square foot, single-story office building. As you know, there is one in town here already, it's the FSA office. Hopefully, none of you own it. They will be replacing that building the way it looks. They don't, again, they don't give us much for details. They just say they're going to upgrade the facility. They open it up for competitive bidding, which that process has already started. And they move very, very slowly. And I mean very slowly. So we're probably looking at, at the earliest, maybe, construction a year from this. So the spring would be 2024, so probably 2025, something like that. So right now, we're just, we're at the stage where we're trying to look at suitable locations. And we scour the town, looking around at different options. I met with Chris here a couple, two, three weeks ago. Got a copy of the map of the lots you just developed here next to the Family Dollar, Dollar General, or whatever's going in there. And then we were made aware of the lots that we're going to talk about tonight, that the Anderson family owns. And they do have a lot off of, I think it's 13th Street, next to the Chiropractor, which has great access and so forth. But the topography sits very low from the street, which creates some problems because there's some guidelines that we have to adhere to from the USDA that says a parking can only have so much slope and lots of parameters. So we're not sure that that lot's going to work for us. Where these other, this other lot that's at the end of the 11th Street is very level, much more suitable to build, but there's no street in front of it. So that's why we're here, to see what, what type of, what can be done from the city's standpoint to put a street in there? What does that look like, I guess? So that's why I'm here. And to answer any questions you may have, so.
So my first one is, are you going to own the building, or is USDA? Because if you own it, there's tax revenue coming in. If they own it, there won't be anything.
And we would own it, and we do pay taxes.
Because that's not a great win-win for us.
Totally agree, yeah. No, that's a good question. And Chris had asked me that, too. Just like the one that's here in town. I don't know who owns it, I could go online and look it up. But that, that building is paying taxes. So, and so will this one. Doesn't make sense that the federal government pays taxes, but they do. They reimburse us for the taxes, basically, so.
Part of your agreement, I assume?
Yeah.
So if I may ask a question, it's, the building you're going to build would be a build-to-suit type of building? And then is it tripled at least, then, or?
You would think so, but no, it is build-to-suit.
Okay.
Somewhat. They just say, here's what we want, we want so many square feet. It needs to be in this delineated area. And from that point on, it's a competitive process as who's going to give them a building that meets all their criteria. They give a little bit of floor plan information, not much. Some specific space for inside the building, but they don't say that they want all brick or all. You could put up a 10-building, and as long as it meets their specifications, they would, they go by the lowest price. We, as building owner, want to build a building that has some residual value, so that if they do leave, that we have a building that we can find another tenant for. And, and we also want it in a location that's also going to be conducive to that as well. Frankly, the, well, we don't know what the street's going to cost to put in here, but one of the problems with trying to procure a lot is because of their slow process. They all work from home now. And I'm not going to, well, I will pick on the federal government. They don't move very fast to begin with. But now that they're all moving, working from home, it's even slower. So the process that used to take six months from start to finish takes about two years. And so, you know, we point out to them, when we go out and get a, let's just say there was a street in front of this, and we're already running into this with, with the seller, that it's going to be a long process before we know whether we're going to be buying your lot. That creates a problem with your other lots on the main street there. Not too many people want to tie up their land for two years and then be told, yeah, we didn't do the project, and you're not selling your lot. So that becomes a real problem. So we make people aware that upfront, that this is really a slow process. So it's frustrating on all ends, but at the end of the day, they do move forward. They have lots of ways out of these leases. The RFP is this thick. They can actually get out of their lease within 120 days if they wanted to. So it really doesn't have people tripping over themselves to do this. But we do own several of them, and if we, if you do the job right, they'll, they'll move in and they'll stay. My understanding was where they're at right now. And again, they don't tell us much, but I think they're growing, they're bringing some more people in, so they need more square footage. And where they're at, they're kind of confined for parking. So one thing for this building, they're looking at significantly more parking than what they have now. And where they're at right now, they're kind of boxed in there, so. Yeah.
I kind of have the property up on the screen.
Yeah, thank you.
Just in case, counsel, anybody want to take a look at where the location is? This right here is the Cobblestone Inn, so it would be this lot right here.
Correct.
Any other lots, just possibly?
Possibly. We probably won't need it if, if, because of the topography of that lot, you're on their lot, that's lot number four. We think it's big enough. We haven't had our architect do any work yet till we figure out which one. If, if that, if for whatever reason this doesn't work, the numbers don't work, or whatever, we probably would revert to the other lot next to the Chiropractor. And we would probably need, we, in that case, we may need the lot behind it just to stretch out the property to have, so we don't have such a steep driveway getting out of there.
Done with the lot.
Good sound. This lot.
Yes.
And that one's got more room than the, what's the difference between the two?
Well, they're about the same, but that lot next to the Chiropractor, if you go out there and look, it's probably eight to 10-feet drop-off from the road to the, to the land.
I thought you were saying that the one you really would like behind the old, the...
Cobblestone?
Cobblestone.
Yeah.
Didn't work, then you revert back to that one next to the Chiropractor? I didn't understand why.
Well, because there's a street there, and, yeah, we could, we don't have to do any, I mean, we haven't talked about how you perhaps, well, if you're going to put the street in, that would be great. If we're doing some type of cost sharing, depending upon what that's going to cost, we would be better off to buy the other lot and spend more, more on-site work to get it to where we need it. So, yeah, that's kind of where we're at.
What kind of surface do you need the road to be in? Concrete, seal coat? You just need a hard surface to get back there?
Yeah, we would not have to be concrete, just, you know, blacktop would be sufficient. I don't think we want gravel.
Oh, we want to give you gravel?
Yeah, yeah. But no, it wouldn't have to be concrete, as far as we're concerned. And we would, you know, we would not need the street all the way to the, to the end of that second lot, just to the end of the first one. And ideally, they like to have two driveways on these properties. So like the farmers that have pickups with trailers, that they can get in and out of there. That is probably another reason they may be looking for new buildings, is to have more space for pickups with cattle trailers and what have you.
So Nate, I suppose you're here to tell us how much that public extension is going to cost?
Well, based on the little nuggets of information that we were able to get, we did throw something together. It is, it's a concrete street, eight inches thick, so it would be, you know, we'd call for commercial traffic, because they only developed the one lot, because that made the next one prime for something else. So it's really up to you guys if you want to do a concrete street or not. Of course, I went big. So, yes, that I have for an eight-inch concrete street. It would also extend the water main out to the end. The sewer, if I understood from Craig correctly. Yes, it runs, runs to the south. So it would not need a sanitary sewer extension. I do have some storm sewer that would run back towards the highway, because that appears to run easterly and then just dump into the ditch to the north of 11th on the west side of K Avenue. So water, storm, and pavement. All the way across both lots, I was at 363,000 for construction. For easy numbers, you could have that if we want to go across the one lot.
And what's the valuation of your building? Once all said and done?
The value or the assessed value? I, I don't, I don't know how to answer that.
Nice. Well, obviously, the assessed value, that's how we're going to get our taxes.
Right. And I don't know how, how you assess, but the building itself to build will be probably two, I think, somewhere in that neighborhood. Typically, when we build these in smaller communities, they assess values significantly less because of the market value. If you ever did go to sell that building in a community, you would never, you would never ditch money back. And we're aware of that, but, yeah, it would be roughly eight to 10,000 square foot. Probably, most of our buildings are half-brick facade in the front. They're nice-looking buildings, we want to have something that we are proud to drive by and be a good, good neighbor.
So if we were to do this, where do those funds come from?
That's, that's what I'd have to dig in and find out, because there already was a TIF used in this area for the Cobblestone Inn. So because of that, I know the TIF has actually retired on this as of last year. It finally got paid off. It's in the same taxing district as everything else right now. So I'm willing to have to find out, can I do that? Can I, can I draw funds from some other kind of benefit? So I have to hunt for it.
You know what a great funding source would be? The USDA.
Well, you got me there.
Just saying. Weird that that would actually work.
It would work, the USDA rule development would work. If it was half, as you said, Nate, it might be too, it might be too small to even bond for it.
For a half?
For a half.
What if we went ahead and ran it out, and there were guns for all future?
Yeah, it would be, it would be enough to do a bond on, yes. But either way, USDA, if it, one way or the other, yes, there'll probably be definitely something to go after.
When would you need a street? Or do you just need a commitment that we're willing to come into some sort of agreement with you to put in a street?
Yeah, we would not need, that's a great point.
Because the last thing I want to do is spend half a million dollars.
Oh, I know.
And that'd have to be nothing.
Right, I totally understand where you're coming from. Yeah, and even as far as we are concerned, we don't want it to be really, we don't, we don't need a street across the entire property. It doesn't need to be eight inches thick of concrete. I mean, I know you're going to build this for heavy-duty traffic, but there's not going to be semis, as far as we're concerned, driving in front of that.
But I think we're, Nate's looking to the future. If ever develops out that farther.
If you keep going, yeah. And I mean, from the city's standpoint, you'd also, it would open up two lots on the north side of that to be developed as well.
Yes.
I don't, they're not platted yet, that I, but they're, they're there.
Back behind the Dollar Fresh, yeah.
Because piecemealing the pavement back together would end up costing more than what it is just to get it all done at once?
Yeah, yeah, that's true.
So the lot, lot between Dollar Fresh and Cobblestone is not big enough, correct?
That one on the corner? It would be, but, and I didn't call Heidi, but Heidi owns that.
They own it, okay.
So I doubt, I doubt, I didn't turn that rock over, but I doubt they're willing to sell that.
Well, they're going to front and judge soon the dollars are up on that one.
I just assumed they wouldn't, but we could call them.
Well, that's what I was looking at, is then you just have an entrance off of, off of, uh...
Yeah, no, I, that...
Highway, and then you could put another entrance off of that stub street.
Oh, that lot would, that lot would...
Sewer right in the ditch, right out there along 218.
Yeah, I mean, it would work, but I noticed they, they bought that after they, they just bought that in the last couple of years.
Right.
So...
They got up the Dollar Fresh, and it wasn't what, within a year, they bought the other lot?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, they're looking down the road if they need to expand, that they've got room to do so. I would, I'll call them, but I...
I'm, I'm just, you never know.
You never know, but I, I would, yeah, I purpose, I'd looked it up, and when I saw that they bought that after the fact, most likely, they want that. But we'll check. Back to your question, Mayor. We would just, yeah, I wouldn't expect you to build this thing next year in, on the hopes that this is going to happen. We would probably, all of our proposals to any landowners, all contingent on getting the project number one for that location. And then in this process, we're going to have contingent on having an arrangement with the city to get street access in some way, shape, or form. So I mean, I guess our, our thought, and this, if another lot comes up, and there is another, there is another potential building lot. Not most ideal spot, but there are some others out there. But we like this general location because of the, just where it is in the city. And we're residual, it's a nice area. And you have a nice community here, by the way. So I've never been to Benton before, so.
It's good to hear.
Yeah, and, and the TIF, and having been a former mayor, and I've done a few of those, and I, I'm so rusty, I'm not even, I don't even remember how they work, other than you get your money back to the taxes.
We don't know if we're eligible for TIF in it, though?
That's right, we don't know if we're eligible on this one. Because that's how we got the water and sewer there in the first place. Finally.
Could we look into that?
Yeah.
I don't think you would pay back.
May not increment to this.
Tenure TIF on a, one...
You could go up to 20.
Let's see, on a 20 on a $2 million, probably assessed at more like 1.2. And I'm going to pay back through the TIF. You could get a big chunk of it, but it's going to end up not paying itself back, I would guess.
USDA plus also job retention as well, because it's there for your growth.
Well, if we extended that street all the way to the end, what do you think the chance starts with somebody would actually buy that other lot, if they actually...
Makes it much more appealing.
I think the chances would be pretty good.
And the two to the north, as well?
Yeah, yeah.
And it may not be your, it may not be a retailer because of the location. It might be somebody a little bit more, you know, a professional.
What is that, eight-inch water main out there?
I estimated, Craig's not here, I don't think we knew what it was for sure. It's going to be, the sewer, the sewer's either, I think it's eight. I'm not, like, on 218 for that lot, but going back to the...
It's eight-inch. It's eight-inch water main.
So you're, you're telling me they're going to bring in more employees?
That is my understanding. At this point, they don't tell us much.
Well, why I ask, because that opens up another avenue for rise grants, if it's a job creation thing, right?
Yeah, it's a sort of title job, I don't know, but they...
So USDA, they're high-paying.
Well, yeah.
So, it works. It's not going with. Thank you, is it eligible? Is it there?
It comes out of the, the head count, how many of those jobs would actually be in there? And then obviously, assuming that you qualify as the, is it high-paying? Is it high-paying? I feel like that's the right term, I think they have some...
Child care eligibility and that sort of thing.
I did just do a quick estimate, it looks like you'd save 50,000 or 60,000 if you switched from eight-inch concrete to seal coat surface and disposed that with rock.
Take a beating, though, if there is going to be a bunch of farmers pulling trailers.
I thought you'd want to know so quick back what happened next.
Appreciate that.
And do you need, I know...
Have we been working together too long, Nate?
The trenching and stuff costs the same, but do you need the eight-inch water mains out there? Or is that...
Well, there's eight-inch right now, a cat, well, that's what it ends at, is eight-inch right now.
It's a dead end, so...
So not that the pipe makes much difference.
For fire flow on a dead end like this in a commercial zone, I would recommend you'd stick with eight if you got it out there. If it was loose, you could, we could look at the possibility of downsizing to six, but if it's a dead end, I'd stay with eight.
Well, we just don't know what the future's going to have on, on out there.
Good point.
So you're saying, need roughly 350 to 400,000, or?
That's just construction cost, and he's got another half million tacked on to it?
But that's all RV, right?
Just don't ask us, let's just shy of half a million, so. So to further discussion, then, if, a cost sharing, perhaps?
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're open to something like that. And I guess what we're trying to find out is, you know, what would that look like? These numbers won't help. You know, just if you're using 500...
I wouldn't, because the last half of it, we could do it on our own, would I say? So we'd be talking about the first half, so.
So you're basically looking at 250?
Yeah. Cost sharing, in my opinion, if that's what we cost share, if that was...
Yeah, I mean, if you've got 250 for, to get it to the end of the lot, you've got two lots up there, so you're looking at 100 and...
125?
125. Well, then you'd have 250.
Your lights on, by the way?
So half of 125, if you're splitting...
Your flashlights on?
Oh, thank you, sorry.
That'd be half of 250. The whole stretch is half a million?
Yes, so you've got 250 for the thing, then if you're saying, okay, let's just say you're developing two lots, one in the north and one in the south, and the city's split in half...
Oh, I got you, I see what you're saying.
So you'd have, the city would have 125, and the developer would have 125, so that'd still be 62.5 per lot. And that's what we want to find out, because on the, on the seller, you know, we need to come back to them and say, you know, we're going to spend this much money to put the street in, it's going to have an impact on what the lots were, so.
Yeah, and I'm just throwing out options, so.
No, that's kind of what I anticipated, maybe, to kind of come this, just, but I had no idea what these numbers would be.
So what do you, are you going to come back and ask for any other sort of, I guess, incentives?
No, I mean, you don't have, there's no, there's no tax abatement programs or anything, as I understand from visiting with Chris, is that correct?
Right, because of the TIF situation. And really, the tax abatement would be on, the way our tax abatement is structured, it's usually on existing buildings already there. So it's on the new portion of, of that, but if there isn't anything there, that's the thing.
That's for three years, I think?
Yeah, it's only three years, it's not a 10-year, it lasts for 10 years on paper, but it, the effective time is only three.
And, oh, well, just to switch gears here, you have these other lots that are being developed next to the, is it Family Dollar?
Yeah, Family Dollar, yeah.
New, the rail school.
So, and I, I didn't really have a plan with me, but is my, is the, is the city going to be doing some site work to, to, to bring Phil in to raise those lots up? There's, one of the realtors has conveyed that that may be happening, or that's in the...
So we don't know those lots.
That, is that, yeah, that's the picture there. So that, is that, that sits significantly higher than the land to the north?
Yes, that over there is, because we are designing our safety services building.
Emergency service.
And we had to have a place to go get rid of a bunch of dirt for a pond we dug, so we used it to preload the site. That's why it's significantly higher.
And you're, you're, you don't, I'm just asking, are your intentions to take that and spread that to the north?
We don't own those lots to the north.
Okay, well, that answers my question. So that wasn't accurate, what I was told. I was told that they're going to take that and level that to the north.
No.
That's our...
That was put there for sluffing.
About as far as we would go is to the, whatever, the other side of West 11th, yeah, right?
Planet West 11th.
Yes.
Okay, now, I can't tell you that, because the roads in that development have not yet been constructed, there is going to be some materials that need to be wasted somewhere. If it needed to land on one of those lots, the developer would likely be open to that, to help fill that if it was beneficial.
Okay, okay. You're working on that process, okay, all right.
Yeah, because I think with the other one, they're just going to blade it off, start building on top of everything. So that's what my understanding was, so.
Next to Dollar Fresh?
No, or Safety Services, we're not going to get rid of all that dirt, I don't think.
No. Okay. Just for discussion, if we said, yeah, we can, you know, roughly, if we can live with half of half for that piece, so it'd be, just wrapping on those numbers, it'd be 62.5 for our share of half of that street. You guys would be able to make that work, you think? I mean, I don't know you're not...
It would take some discussions.
Yeah. Okay. Because, no, if we were to come to some sort of a template agreement, we know these numbers are constantly moving in the wrong direction.
If it's not going to get built for another two years.
Right.
I assume these numbers are reliable.
See what construction costs do, but they typically have not gone down.
They have not gone down. We're at our new normal now. This is the lot.
Yeah.
It's only going to go up from here.
But yeah, just, just for discussion purposes, if we did come to some sort of agreement, we would have it all contingent upon that project, so that nobody's going to get...
It would have to, you can do it to the line.
Yeah, yeah. And, and I think, you know, as far as timeliness goes, if they told us today that we were awarded this contract today, and this is October, by the time we get the final details worked out with them, it would be spring. And then we would start construction for another six months, so you would have plenty of time. And, and we could work temporarily with, you know, this with a gravel, you know, you get the sub-bass in there, the whatever, get it in there, that's not the end of the world.
Yeah, but we got to get all the underground in before we waste all that time for the rock down.
Great, great, great. So I don't think that would be an issue either. But these numbers frankly were bigger than I was visioning, so, by quite a bit. Like, it hasn't been a long time since we... But these numbers frankly were bigger than I was visioning, so, by quite a bit, I, it hasn't been a long time since we've put, I've put any streets in, but.
Yeah, concrete goes up about ten to fifteen percent every year.
Yeah.
In this past couple, it's been going up that much every six months, so.
Would this have, this is curving gutter as well, if you like, yeah.
Yeah, it was, the existing street is thirty six feet wide, so we would just extend it thirty six feet the rest of the way out.
It was made for some big traffic to go out there.
Just throwing this out, I'm just thinking out loud here, if we, if we said, would the city allow us to put some sort of a driveway from the end of that street? Most likely it would be blacktop. Going out and into that, into that, uh. Where are we at? Yeah, just like off there, off the end and hang a left into that lot.
Off here and here.
Yep, yep, I mean, technically, that's all we need, we, cause you, there's water, there's a hydrant ready at the end of that street. There's sewer out there somewhere that we can, they're, they're not a big user, I mean, we, we've got a bathroom and a water fountain, there's no showers, so the water can seep just very little. So, we just need a way to, ideally, we'd have two driveways, but we can live with one if we have enough room to.
So, we dump in the utilities and just seal code it, you're back down to what, what did you say?
Save you fifty nine.
So you're gonna be at? Four twenty?
Yeah, bottom line, that's for the whole, whole thing all the way out.
That'd be for the whole thing, so if we cut that in half, now we're down to two ten if we seal code it.
But we're not, we're thinking for the future.
Yeah.
We're not interested in seal coding anything.
No. But you could, to get by, if it's just gonna be in for the long term, as long as you got the sub base prepared for it, you can always come back and dump in the concrete in between the curving gutters.
So then we drop sixty off of, basically off the five hundred? Off the three sixty three. So you're at three hundred, that's going all the way to the back. Call it. Construction two ten for seal code.
Is that what that's doing, the seal code, like we typically do?
I included the cost of it, because, so there's a cost, if you give it in house cheaper than the bid, then obviously there's a savings there, but. It's a value of it.
Yep.
So that's what I'm on.
So when you say seal code, what do, what do you, what does, what is that?
It'll add the gravel, the sub basis, like it's gonna be.
And then you just, okay, I follow you, okay. And, and you said that would run what, roughly?
Uh, that was a savings of fifty nine thousand.
So you're talking three hundred thousand divided by half of three hundred.
One fifty.
So one fifty. So seventy five for each, and you've got half of the seventy five to the north lot, are we, are, is everybody on the page, same page with that? Assuming you wanted to do that, I, I know we're just kicking things around. Okay.
So you're not planning on going all the way to the end of the first lot? That gets a little less incentive for us to do that. I mean, you're just talking about just making a hard corner and getting into your lot.
Yeah, I mean, if you were not gonna put, I mean, do anything else, I mean, that, and, and I'm not sure, I think. They do, they, they, the government, the USDA does need to approve whatever site plans we bring to them. And I don't have, they haven't, at this point, they don't. They just wanna, kinda goes in stages, so we haven't got the actual RFP yet. A lot of times, they do call for two driveways, and if they do, then that idea's out the window. And frankly, and I think you guys agree, it's, it's kind of a Band-Aid, if you really wanna do this right, we need to.
Yes.
To do it right.
If you're interested in seal code and just a little corner there, that'd probably be.
So just so I'm on the same right page, if you wanted to do this correctly with this concrete and everything, you're looking at like three sixty.
Yeah, that's not including the engineering fees and stuff.
That's just construction.
So you're looking at this four ninety, basically?
Yeah, that's the number we're looking at, so just call half a million.
Yeah, so you're looking at five hundred thousand, which a couple of years from now, it probably will be that at least. So half that's two fifty, hundred and twenty five divided by two, so you're, you're at sixty two five. All right, well, that, I mean, that's, would, assuming everybody was agree, would, would that be something you would entertain?
We'll entertain about anything, but ideally, we go find out if we can get funding from somebody to help us pay for it.
I just wanna know where we would get the money on our end.
If it's up to that half million, you'd have to bond?
Yeah, that half a million, but if it's more than four hundred that I bond, it's, I'd bond at four, four hundred on that. That's where our point is, where it would make sense to do that, so. Well, yeah, four hundred is typically been the amount to make it worthwhile to bond, otherwise, the fees and everything, you're just better off getting a loan. And then trying to pledge, pledge your property taxes on paying off that loan. Out of your general fund, but if you can have that TIF, that's up to tone it down.
So are those two green spaces still paying agricultural rates? Taxes?
Uh, that's here.
I just bet they are.
Yep, that one is, and, yep, they both are.
And just 'cause we run the street out there does not mean that they can have to change that.
That's great, that's up to where.
So on that note, is that, is that zone commercial now for what we're looking to do?
For, for our purposes of the city, it is zone commercial, even though it is tasked as an ad.
Okay. Okay. All right.
So yes, the zoning is fine for what you intend to do.
Okay. Any more questions for me? We're, we're probably, I mean, this, just, at first blush, the numbers are such that it's probably gonna make it. Maybe cost prohibitive to use that lot, just looking at some other, like what I described earlier, we could, we can buy that other lot to the south, buy both of those lots for, and then have two lots. And, um, just have additional space, cause they are looking at a significant amount of parking, um, we may need more than one lot, so. Okay. I don't think.
What we would need to help with is, hey, how many, are you gonna bring in new jobs, because it opens up our avenues, you know? We got some time here to go seek out funding, and ideally, we can get some grants or something to help pay for it, lower the cost for all of us.
Yeah, and, um, yeah, and I, as I understand it, they are expanding or they may have already, I'm not sure, but they're, they are doing some consolidation across the country with. Right now in Iowa, they have one of these buildings in every, every county, pretty much, um, some counties have more of a demand, obviously, than others. And they're taking some of the departments, um, and they're doing like a four county quad, they're taking, not the Farm Service Agency, but the NRCS. Um, and they're like taking four counties and combining them into one, so as I understand it, this was the county chosen, so. Is, that's how I understand it, I could, don't take that to the bank, but that's one of the reasons they're looking, is to expand, and because they're doing that, they do need significantly more parking. And if you're familiar with their site up there, there's not, there's not a lot of parking, it's pretty boxed in. But if they can't find the spot, then they do look for, where can we put this thing, so there, there is some job retention of, you know, and they are good jobs, you know, so.
Yeah, and if it is going to consolidate, here they may not be creating new jobs, there's new jobs here.
Right, and, and keeping the ones that are here as well, yeah, retaining them, yeah.
Especially if they're doing the NRCS thing and bringing them in here, so.
Have you, have any of you caught wind of this project going on at all?
I got the email, they're looking for space.
Yeah, so did I, and we responded.
From the USDA, yeah, yeah, and because we own, other buildings were on that list when they sent that out. And if nobody responds, and if nobody, if they don't get anybody to do this, then they, they just keep trying, or they don't move on. There, there's no rhyme or reason what they do, um, it's, it's pretty crazy, actually, um, and they just, it's really, really slow, really slow. So, um, I really appreciate you guys.
Thank you.
Coming out early, kicking away from your families and so forth, but, um.
But you, you couldn't get that information from them, they won't cough it up, that they're gonna have a consolidation and bring more jobs down, I guess.
I can ask them.
Why not?
They, they're just so tight lipped and, um. Once the R, once they, once they put the RFP out, they're more open to, to that, because obviously, the building, for, for example, the, the, the restaurants, they have to have so many. So many urinals and so many closets for the, for the ladies based on how many are in that building, so they know how many are gonna be in there, cause they let us know when that time comes, so.
Yeah, you'll have an idea when, if it's increasing.
And they do give us a rough idea of the square footage, and it is eight thousand, which for them, that's a, that's a pretty good sized building. Most of them run about five and, about a hundred to six thousand square foot, so. And that's what piqued our interest, we like the bigger buildings, cause costs, this is much to, there's so much, just like the street, you've got so much cost involved, whether the street's thirty feet long or thirty miles long, so.
Well, we went through this with FS though, too, out there, and then we were able to get the RISE grant, cause they brought everything in.
Yep.
Because they were worried they were gonna take it somewhere else, so. We worked on it, got Thirteenth Street extended, right?
There's thirteen.
And that'll end up being RISE grants, because not only do you retain the people here, they've consolidated some of their efforts here.
Speaking of that, okay, so when you turn into the FS driveway, there's a field to the right.
Yes.
Is that in the city limits?
Yes, it is, it is also, um, I don't believe that field is in the electric territory, depending on where it's at, though.
Yeah, that could be in.
When you say electric territory, yeah, that's.
So we split with REC, it can be very unstrict, I guess.
So that is in the, that is in the city limits?
Yes, it is in, well.
Yeah, I believe it is. What about, see that driveway going straight to the south of that driveway from the, from the FS plant, see, there's an apron?
Right there.
Right there. Is that lot to the south in the city? And it looks like there's water and sewer out there.
The FS there is.
It is.
It gets low out there, though. They were talking, they were talking lift station.
Okay.
To develop that before.
Is, is FS in the city sewer?
Yes, FS is, but it's not on city electric.
Which we're fine being on.
That's up, they're on a line, though.
Yeah, I can't remember who's all out.
They're on a line there.
So that corner lot where you have your cursor, that is city and that has water sewer?
Well, this one here, half of it is, is, yes, it has water sewer off of thirteen. However, the electric, it's gonna be split right here in the middle, right at this line.
So a line's toward town and?
A line's away from town.
Yeah.
Otherwise, it's.
We got our own electricity.
Otherwise, it's the city.
Oh, you have your own?
That's why there's very strict lines, and they won't give up any of their territory, so we battle with REC, we battle with the line.
They're the interconnect agreement.
They just keep boxing us in. So like we have one neighborhood that is on REC, I think, or is on a line, not on our city electric, so. That's yours.
Comes on REC.
Yeah, REC.
REC.
Yeah.
Any issues on that, we typically put a solar array up on our buildings, do you, do you, you buy that electricity back then?
The electric utility does.
Yeah, different board, we don't cover that one.
Okay.
But they do work with solar.
Okay.
Yeah, there's a big silver field on it. And a rail school.
Well, I think that, I don't have.
We would like to make it work, we just gotta make sure we cross our Ts and dot our Is and make sure we're in the right path here.
Yeah, and, and we, you know, we're gonna explore other locations as well, that is very, I, I wasn't sure if that was in the city limits for sure.
That's a doubt.
But again, that's got, the street has got a pretty decent topography to it. All right, well, I'll pass this on to our contractor.
And feel free to call.
Yeah, yeah, I appreciate all your time and effort. So, as I said earlier, you're, you're on overtime now, so you're.
Yeah.
That's right.
Thank you, thank you.
They didn't tell you at the work sessions, you get a bill?